Good evening and welcome to this Wednesday, August 27, 2014 Board of Education meeting. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Ito.
Here.
Eliza.
Here.
Burner.
Here.
Lemberger.
Here.
Saginaw.
Here.
Wheaton.
Here.
We have a plan.
All right. We'll call Pledge of Leagues. Please follow me in the pledge of lea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next on our agenda is administrative reports. Superintendent's report.
Yes, President. We've now, this evening, have a rather brief but important superintendent's good news report. I think this is the last short one we have before we get deep into student things. The first is excerpts from a thank you note from the Sheldon Area Nature Center Committee. Annually, they do a number of improvement projects and they are sharing with us their appreciation for the support that they've received at the nature center and the assistance particularly with recognizing the Oshkosh West High School football team for their contribution of lifting, carrying, and carrying on cleanup activities. We've had an interesting summer there this summer because of both heavy rains and winds and again, the work that our maintenance staff, Sushwar, and Ivan making contact and continuing to work on a monthly basis with the Sheldon Area Nature Center Committee maintains the quality of our working relationship and their long hours of volunteerism that is involved with making sure that the nature center is well preserved. They're happy and we're happy and Oakwood Elementary School, along with the neighborhood, has benefited from that continued progress at the Sheldon Area Nature Center. The Lighted Schoolhouse event on August 14 marked the final day for the second annual Summer Lighted Schoolhouse program housed at M Line Cook and open to K-5 students from Washington, Webster Stanley, M Line Cook Elementary Schools that more than doubled in size this year with more than 60 participants working with over 30 partners from the university and community. Students were exposed to a variety of activities. Students were given the opportunity to participate in drum circles with the Oshkosh Rhythm Institute to learn the amazement of bubbles with the Art of Wonder, to garden as part of the school plant beds with the Master Gardeners, and to sail with the International Youth Sailing Program of Oshkosh in addition to many other activities. So wonderful experiences for our students in that program. A week ago, Wednesday night, a number of us had the opportunity to join with the city of Oshkosh and the Oshkosh community that are receiving Wellness Award on Wednesday. August 20, the Oshkosh Area School District received one of 20 citywide awards for being a Well Workplace. This is part of the Well City Achievement Award, the congratulations to the award. Special thank you to Diane Vogel who put much energy and time into this effort. The board received a report last spring regarding a wellness program and we understand that we are the fourth city in the state of Wisconsin and the 13th city nationwide to achieve Well City recognition. Lots of efforts on lots of major other businesses in the community participating along with the city of Oshkosh. So it's a great partnership to be a party to. The first annual Oshkosh Area School District Writing Institute, 15 teachers from across the district met for two weeks this summer as they began their collaborative work with the Fox Valley Writing Project. Participants designed an inquiry project to inform their teaching, creative demonstration lessons, put themselves in the shoes of their students as they worked pieces of writing through a process and even celebrated their accomplishment with an author's chair. Follow-up sessions will occur throughout the academic year for the teachers continuing to learn working together. The Oshkosh Area School District has received the wonderful news that we were awarded $1,177,000, $1.177 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education under the Elementary School Counseling Program to be used over a three-year period ending on September 2017. The grant was one of 41 projects awarded nationwide from 566 applicants that were reviewed. The grant will be utilized to enhance school counseling services across all 14 elementary schools in year one and target four sites including Merrill, Oaklawn, Reed, and Washington. The project has five discrete objectives. One, to decrease academic and behavioral achievement gaps between student subgroups and increase parent engagement connections. Third, reduce the number of disciplinary referrals for grades K-5. Four, to increase annually the percentage of staff who can demonstrate the skills and knowledge needed to implement conscious discipline with PBIS framework and make appropriate mental health referrals. Increase behavior and emotional strength and indicators of resiliency in students. The award will support three full-time equivalent school counselors with one of the counselors serving as halftime project director in training. Since we received this word two days ago and had it confirmed Monday afternoon, we've been working on preparing a response, but we all celebrate and thanks to all the members of the executive team who participated in this. Thank you, Dr. Geigley and Julie and all of individuals involved. Very positive outcome. Lastly, you have a list of activities that relate to superintendent's calendar in the last two-week period and I would just like to comment that once again, as I've been cautiously watching schools across the district get near to completion, our three schools that had major renovations occurring this summer, I can tell you that we're close. Unfortunately, Merrill, as we have open house, suddenly we have open asphalt being heated for putting a roofing project as parents are approaching the school. Not the best time in the world, but the insides of the schools are in fine shape with some minor finished cleaning. But in visiting with teachers at each of the three schools that had the major construction this summer, this afternoon, I found teachers to be happy and content and glad to be back in their rooms and getting organized for the four o'clock open houses that were occurring and being very pleased with that. I had a chance to visit six schools today, three of which had been under construction and I find our staff to be positive, excited as they were in discussions that we had earlier this week with them on Monday with convocations. So we're off to an exciting, good start for the year and really celebrating being in a positive atmosphere for the first time in numbers of years. So, thank you.
All right. I thank you very much. Other administrative reports? Is there anyone else who wishes to report on the subcommittee?
Mr. Ito.
First off, policy and governance met on the 19th. We had a presentation for NEOLA in regards to their policy management services. The board recommended that NEOLA Management Service Agreement go forward for approval at this meeting. We also discussed Student Athletic Concussion Management Plan that was revamped. We didn't have one of these last year and Brad Jadarski, Craig Leader, and Dr. Geigley did a really good job on creating this document. It was just a rule that we reviewed so it doesn't require a vote. We received a report about the closed campus high school project last year. If you'll remember, in an effort to get kids out of study hall, give them some flexibility if they maintain a higher grade point average, they were allowed to get this flexibility. And this has been an overwhelming success and we're going to continue with that. We also have some things which are on this evening's agenda. Policy 342.3, gifted and talented programs. The committee recommended that this be go to the board this evening. 342.4, programs for children at risk. The board recommended that this evening. 225.1, administrative staff evaluation that was also recommended to be pushed forward for a vote this evening. And policy revisions to Policy 170 board meetings and the committee also recommended that we move forward with that this evening. That's it for policy and governance.
All right. Thank you. Other reports? Steve?
Energy Committee met yesterday. Congratulations, Dr. Lemberger, on being chosen co-chair. We're also looking for another co-chair, another chairman, and we're going to be promoting this to the public through website and through some press releases. The idea of the Energy Committee when it was created was to get community participation in this and we have had some very good community participation in this. And I would suggest that from what I'm hearing, being on the committee since 2009, that we're leading in the state or certainly in the area in this regards in energy conservation, moving forward with recycling ideas, some innovative progressive ideas here in regards to trying to keep our energy costs down. They did a quick facilities update. Washington is being completed, the work over there is being completed also over at Webster and there was a lot of work at Merrill which included boiler replacement, roofing windows, and tuck pointing. We also are going to be reviewing and sending out and discussing with principals and educators about when they're setting up the classrooms, when we put in these boilers with the new univent systems, you can't pile all kinds of stuff on top of the univents because obviously you're blocking access to the heat. So we need to sit there and have some professional development on that. They also received copies of the energy usage report. We'll have a full year now, starting in September, so we can take a look at what the changes were at Oaklawn. Interesting data, this data will be posted for the public at some point later this year to review on a monthly basis on our website. I know these things aren't exciting, but they are exciting. We're changing our gas supplier. We've entered into a one-year contract with a co-op gas company. The idea here is that this group out of Illinois wants to contract with schools and public entities within Wisconsin to secure a large group, will have buying power to obtain gas at a lower cost. I believe we're the first or second district in the state to go with a supplier which will reduce our energy costs and our transportation costs, which is a good thing. Next, agenda items and stuff, we're looking at doing a reissuance of our energy usage rules and compressing that more to a bullet point type thing so people can retain it better. And our next meeting is on the 18th, 2014 at 1:00 p.m. The public is invited. This is at the maintenance building over on South Main Street.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just may comment. This afternoon, Sherry sent out a notice of the reminder of making sure things were not on top of those new univents. And as I toured buildings today, I had individual teachers talk to me about, was this okay? Was this okay? Was this far enough away? Teachers were reading the email messages on the issue and in a couple of cases, I helped people lift things off of the univents so that compliance was ready quickly there. But the issue is that, you know, as a whole, many of our classrooms in our buildings are small and teachers have lots of wonderful stuff in their classrooms and that stuff occupies space and now losing that eight to 10 feet of univent space is a hard thing to get used to. And so we'll be asking principals to continue to work on that. Even some photographs of inappropriate use of the univents were posted on notices to all employees this afternoon.
I just want to comment on that same issue. I think historically, there's been a lot of role modeling by current teachers, former teachers, and our teachers who were students and saw that role modeling of placing things on the univents for various reasons, either because there wasn't enough storage or they were unhappy with the airflow, either too hot or too cold or just, well, it wouldn't have been just right, but too hot or too cold. So there's a long history of misuse of the univents and I'm sure these are much more efficient than those of days gone by, so hopefully it will be a smooth transition for our staff.
It was quite amazing to see how between early afternoon and late afternoon when the notice was out, how attentive people who were reading their emails were on the issue of protecting that new equipment.
Other reports? Seeing none, we will move on to non-agenda related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on a non-agenda related item, something that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an item that is appearing on tonight's agenda? All right. Workshop number one, McKinstry Energy Efficiency Projects.
Tonight, as you know, we've gone through this energy exemption project before, so tonight we're here to show you a whole nother series of possible projects. And I introduced Jim Fox at our last meeting, as he will take center stage here tonight with us. He's been here three and a half weeks, so he's really been inundated quickly, but I have to say he's really hit the ground running and in three and a half weeks, he has more knowledge of the district than I do, I think, in some of the facility areas, so we're really glad to have him on board. The other thing is the McKinstry staff here and I'll let them introduce themselves to you. As part of the energy exemption, revenue limit exemption, you have to contract with a performance contracting company. You can't just do this on your own. We've had a really good luck with McKinstry. They help analyze the projects. They help select in the projects, they cost the projects, and then they provide assistance in managing those projects and then calculating energy savings from them. So I'll let them introduce themselves and share the presentation.
Glenn Bolt, I'm the Construction Services Manager from Hay Street.
Mario Malanzie, Tommy Executive.
Hey, Shadaski, Program Manager.
Meyer, Project Phone.
And that is the Business Secretary Manager.
Thank you. Thanks, Sue. Before you tonight, each of you has been given a packet to share information on where we are at for the next projected energy efficiency exemption facility improvement project. We have had, as Stan had said, we're just finishing our current exemption project, which has been a challenge to wrap up, but as you have an opportunity to walk through the building and see the improvements to the boiler rooms, to the facilities, to the univents and the classrooms, how we're delivering those savings with windows, tuck pointing, roofing, I think we're certainly going to see a positive outcome as we start to monitor our energy consumption bills this winter. Hopefully, we don't have as bad a winter as we did last year, but it'll be encouraging to be able to see all of our efforts come to fruition as we monitor those plans. So the purpose of tonight was to discuss the next proposed exemption, which really was a continuation of future exemptions focusing on boilers, lighting, HVAC, and controls. Six different buildings, as you will see in your packet tonight, and we would like to discuss these as more of an overall overview, excuse me, of all the buildings. So, can I share with you tape over, please?
You bet. Thanks, Jim. Thanks again for having us. Last time you saw us was probably back in February, I think, we just kind of provided halfway update before all of the construction work, you know, this summer. So, you know, by no means do we want to get into the weeds and we want to just show you a short presentation. It's actually the same as your packet here. So maybe we can, just wanted to highlight a couple of topics here, and we talked about this in February a little bit, but the district, since we've worked with McKinstry over the last five years, have seen over one and a half million dollars of guaranteed energy savings. That's through nearly $30 million worth of investments, but your energy usage is, you know, almost top 10 in the state from a percentage standpoint. So 72 cents a square is very low for the age of buildings that you have in Oshkosh. So a couple of other key things we wanted to share is, this is just the overall list that we've compiled at this point today. So back in July, we met with Stan and the administrative team during our, what we call rough order of magnitude, just kind of halfway, we go through that same process for each phase and then we say, hey, are we on track here? Are we looking at, you know, the right things that, you know, that you guys need? And so Stan and team had asked us to take a deeper dive into some things and less of a dive into others. So this is the list that we've compiled today and the pricing that you see there is a guaranteed maximum price. Done all the homework necessary to achieve the scopes, work with contractors and partners alike. So I'm not sure that we need to necessarily get into each one of these. We do have the team here as well to answer any, you know, technical questions that you may have about the proposed upgrades. But like Jim said, the majority of them is roofing, controls, HVAC, and some lighting. We're mainly addressing some facilities that were not addressed in the previous phases, you know, due to their uncertainty and variety of other things. But the one pieces that I wanted to kind of touch on tonight was the process itself. Sorry, there are a few slides here. Oops, I'll touch a little bit on the savings as well. See there, we used a similar approach that we did last time to generate some of the savings. We calculated about $38,000 of guaranteed energy savings on an annual basis, which I was pleased to find even that much as we've gone through so many phases of projects here. A lot of it is in lighting and a lot of it is at North High School, which we hadn't done a lot of work in in the past. So in addition, we've taken a repair risk calculation essentially, takes 35% of the first cost today. We take that over a 10-year period and bring it back to today's dollars and then that all added up from avoiding dollars added to the capital budget as well as repairs, we're looking at almost $500,000 of a budget impact on an annual basis. And the last set there just shows a timeline. I think this wasn't something that seemed to have provided as well to the board, but it is a little bit of a tight timeframe and I know we did want to meet with the finance committee prior to this as a lead-in, but scheduling just didn't work out there. But a couple of steps from a financing standpoint and then we would like to be back on the 22nd of October, you know, from an approval standpoint if the district, you know, decides to move forward. So I guess I'll just leave it at that and, you know, we're open to any questions from a scope standpoint or anything that might happen.
The impact that I, and I also sent it out really late, is the revised tax impact. In the staff report, I showed a tax impact for 8 million to 10 million, but then when we buy back together again and we're up to 14 million, in front of you should be another estimate. And it still shows 8, 10, 12, and 14 million. And the reason it's different than the estimate that was in your packet is the estimate in your packet, they didn't show making a payment until the 15th, 16th school year, so the levy wouldn't have an impact until 15th, 16th. But I wanted to be able to have an impact already in 14th, 15th, so they redid all of the debt structure. So we're actually making a principal payment early enough in 15 that we would tax for that payment already in 14th, 15th. So it sort of stretched out the payment schedule a little more. It's still borrowing for 20 years, but there's an earlier principal payment. And because you're not waiting a whole year to make an interest payment, it also impacts the interest payment. So it has a little bit of an impact on the mill rate. It actually lowers the impact of the mill rate. And so what I have in front of you actually shows that you can borrow 14 million for not much more than the previous estimate showed before for 10 million. I don't know if that makes, if I clarified that.
Are there any questions or any discussion at this time with regard to this goal?
We intend tomorrow morning, this got reversed because of vacation schedules and conflicts that we, strangely enough, will, with the Facilities and Finance Committee tomorrow morning, be reviewing this normally would occur in reverse order. But in order to inform the entire board, we wanted to make sure we brought this entire package to the board to look at it at this timeframe. Basically, what this review does, with the exception of the recreation building, it basically would then include every facility from the very beginning through every facility being addressed in one way or another based on the criteria that's established by this process and law, so that we would be in a position that the response to the needs for each building would be accomplished and we're looking at whether it's a two-year or a three-year project. The good news on all of this also is, as we are working on the Lakeside process, that the Lakeside issues can be absorbed and do some retrofits on Lakeside, the older portion of the building at the same time, so that when occupancy would occur at Lakeside, we would have parts of all of the building being renovated, just not to the same level as new construction would be. We'd be able to deal with windows, roof, and heating ventilation, those types of things in a manner that would consummate with the new construction project as well. And that's from a standpoint of having a balanced satisfaction in that building makes a lot of sense and certainly, we've not talked about the order of any projects, but the one that we would certainly know in year one would be the Lakeside project, so it would be done in a timely fashion with the other work at Lakeside.
Can you briefly explain the, you've got highest mill rate and average mill rate listed here and highest mill rate is listed at 15 cents at 14 million and average is listed at 20 cents for 14 million. And I guess what, highest mill rate for 2015?
Yeah, I should have had her, right, this PMA did this for us and I should have had her word that a little different. Highest mill rate is the impact it's going to have in the first year. And then actually, it'll go down after that first year. The first year's higher and then you always get state aid a year later. So because we're making this debt payment, then in the following year, we'll get a little bit more state aid, so that'll lower the impact of the levy. So by the second year, it actually goes down a few cents. The average is high because in the last three years of how they're structuring the debt is so that it kind of fits within our current debt, so that the impact is lower. And towards the end of the borrowing, so like about 16 years into the borrowing, all of our other debt comes off and so then we start making really large payments on this borrowing. And so the impact 20 years out is like 59 cents.
Okay. That's why the average is up because basically you're infilling, you're leveling off the playing fields across the entire time and so you've infilled the last part of it.
Right. So the first couple of years is 15, then it goes down to like 12, and then it stays 12 until the last three years and then it goes up to 59. But a lot of things could happen between now and 20 years from now. You know, you could refinance that debt and it's really not a 59 cent impact because a whole bunch of other borrowing is coming off.
Right.
And then this will just fill in. So your actual borrowing level will stay about the same.
And to think about, in reality, the existing bonded debt on new construction would have expired, even Oaklawn will in 17 years, 18 years be off the bill.
Thank you. Does explain it very well. Other questions, comments? Barb?
One of the things that jumps out at me from your report, which I believe is excellent, I'm very impressed with the quality of your work in terms of writing this in layman's terms, so all of us can understand, and the photographs you've included. But I keep seeing this phrase over and over, something has exceeded their useful life. And I'm just really struck by that and I think if many of us had heating units or ventilation tunnels or whatever, fan motors that were in the age range of 40 to 90 years, we hopefully would have replaced them by now. The other comment I wish to make about this report- The other comment I wish to make about this report, which, which really strikes me, is that this has been a trend over many, many years in this district to hang on to things that have exceeded their useful lives as a way to keep tax rates down and those kinds of things. On the other hand, many of these heating units, ventilation tunnels, fan motors have been kept operational by a, an extraordinary maintenance team, maintenance team and building level custodians, many of whom who have had to create replacement parts because they no longer existed for those pieces that had exceeded their normal life. So, I just want to give a shout out to the maintenance staff and the custodians, current and former, who have made these things last forty to ninety years, and ensure that the district has been good stewards of the dollars provided by this community to run our schools. And with what you're proposing, we'll be able to continue to do that. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions? They're going to be bringing this back before us, so this is your opportunity. Seeing none? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next is the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Point number thirteen, is there anything else that people wish to poll? Yes?
I had emailed you yesterday about seven, twelve, and thirteen.
Seven and twelve as well. All right. Anything else people wish to poll? All right. The board will consider approval of minutes of July twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen board meeting, minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen board meeting, bills payable, personnel, A, appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salary schedule, number five, near-site clinic and inter contract, number six, first-class notification of annual budget, number eight, Neola Inc. license agreement, number nine, updates to policy three forty-two point three gifted intelligence program, number ten, updates to policy three forty-two point four programs for children at risk, number eleven, updates to policy two twenty-five point one administrative staff evaluation. So move. Call or roll? Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number seven, be resolved with the Oshkosh area school district board of education. Approve having two board meetings in June, June third and June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, and one board meeting in July, starting in June, starting in June two thousand and fifteen, as filed with the secretary to the board of education. So move.
Second.
I do support this motion. My only question is whether or not, if this is going to be an ongoing change, that is, two board meetings in June and one in July, if that should be, that language should be incorporated into Board Policy one seventy at some future point.
I think that seems reasonable. Mr. Dito?
Yeah, it makes sense.
The other question I have is, I'm glad you pulled this, because I had kind of forgotten about it. It was a small thing, but it seems like we are, in November, December, we always go from the second and fourth Wednesday to the first and third. Why don't we just do the first and third all year round, and that way we're consistent, and we don't confuse people? I mean, I'm not sure why we do the second and fourth normally. It's that way when I came here. But first and third is just as good, and then we don't run into the holidays issue.
And Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Right.
Administratively, we can, might run into, make it fourth of July, I suppose. It's the only time.
But there's only one.
But there's only one meeting in July.
July.
Mr. Dito has a question.
Mr. Dito?
Well, then, what are we going to do when we have high school graduation, which usually occurs in the first week of June? If we're going to have it, I mean, then it's going to be backed up there. The way the policy reads now has flexibility, and there are times when we can change these. I mean, there's going to be times where, where you have a holiday following something like this. I understand what you're saying, John. I mean, we could do it on the first and third.
I think we could look at it, but I think it could be looked at in policy and governance, and if it, if it worked as John suggests, we could do it. If not, I mean, and then we could actually modify it.
One seventy again.
Yeah. If not, we continue as we, as we're going.
In recent years, because of the school calendar, we have had graduation on the second, in the second week of June, not in the first. So, it has not been a conflict in that, and that's where we carefully make sure that we look at the first and third in June to deal with that issue. But either combination, from the standpoint of our trying to encourage administrators to take vacation when students are not here and to be away, and what we've discovered with keeping as full a board together, it's not always going to work, but most of the time, it is really nice to have all seven board members here as often as possible. It allows for some freedom of vacation and adjustments as well. So, we can make anything work, but it's, I think it's a good experiment for one year, but I think the suggestion of changing the policy is an excellent one.
Other comments?
Do we need to make a motion to table this then, or?
Wouldn't have to. We could still approve this, and it could still be modified later. Other comments? All right. Seeing none, call or roll?
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number thirteen, be resolved with the Oshkosh area school district board, oh, I'm sorry. Resolution number twelve, be resolved with the Oshkosh area school district board of education. Approve updates to policy one seventy board meeting as filed with the secretary to board of education. So move.
Second.
I'll also support this resolution. My reason for pulling it was to tie it to number seven, so that the, the language is consistent with the practice, so that we don't have to have a separate resolution. That doesn't seem very efficient to me to, to address policy changes with resolutions. So, I appreciate the work that Mr. Dito led in the policy and governance meeting relative to some updates in this policy one seventy, so I can use this opportunity to thank him for his leadership and effort.
I think we should actually send this back to policy and governance and have this discussion about, instead of doing it now and then doing it again, let's maybe take it back in the September.
But would it, would it change what you've, I mean, what I've read in here, it doesn't necessarily, well, I guess some of it would be affected by what you did.
No, not really. I mean, the parts about the dates, the actual dates would be the parts you would change within that document, not the things that we.
That you did, right. So, the things that you did would, if we adopted them now, probably wouldn't change much in the next decision.
I would hope not, no.
I'd entertain a motion either way, if you wish to table or if you wish to.
Well, you make some, you make some, a good point there. Yes, I mean, I don't, I don't see how that's going to be affected if we change it to the first and third.
No, I don't, I don't think so either.
Other discussion? Please call or roll?
Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Now, resolution thirteen, be it resolved, the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve, Mr. Frank Edigem as an expulsion hearing officer for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year, as filed with the secretary to board of education.
So move. Second.
Even though I asked that this be pulled, I do support this. My only concern is that we only have one expulsion hearing officer being named, and if he is working for other school districts, or would be ill or out of town, I wouldn't want those expulsion hearings to be delayed. I think that was one of the things I wrestled with as a new board member, serving on those expulsion hearings, and the, and recognizing the difficulty of finding three board members who are available at the same time. And my hope would be, with having this hearing officer, or one or two hearing officers, that that process could be expedited for the sake of the students and their families.
Dr. Jones has comments. He's been working on attempting to do exactly what you're asking, and we just have been unsuccessful in getting those names yet.
And we hope to be, we are continuing to seek other people. We did have three people to start with, and after we had laid out the details, we had two individuals, this is one of them, and agreed to it, and then about a week later, the second individual declined for personal reasons and said that he had taken another opportunity and would not have time to do it. So, we are continuing to seek other, I will be bringing again, just as, as you see before you, when we do get other candidates, and we're very hopeful, we'll bring those forward for approval as well. In the meantime, we thought it'd be prudent to bring the person, one person forward as we start the school year, if there's any instances that, that could come up, come up about. So, in the event, though, to answer your question directly, in the event that this one person would not be available, in the, as you know, the timeline, there is a very strict timeline for expulsion, we would then have the necessity to call the board to act on it if that did not work. So, we do have a backup plan, but we'd prefer, you know, to go with this, this new plan.
Actually, another question, and I apologize for not asking it earlier. Having been out of town, I didn't get around to it, I'm afraid. But are we still going to have Davis and Kielfeld at these meetings, or would they no longer be? I guess, we're spending money to do this, whereas obviously, when board members do it, there's no charge to the district, so we are incurring a new cost that we haven't incurred in the past. Are we still, are we saving money because we no longer would then need Davis and Kielfeld, or are they still going to operate as, and I guess I'm asking Sue, how is, how does that work? Are we still using them as the, are they still running the meetings?
I, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yes. What we, what we had planned on is, for the first meeting or two, if necessary, using Davis and Kielfeld as, to make sure that the process was, integrity was, was agreed upon by both, they're both legal attorneys in the practice. But from our research with other districts, is that, no, we would not in the future.
Okay.
Because the policy, and we, all policies were reviewed by WASB, and their attorneys, also drafted language and meeting with other districts and doing research with them, that no, again, the new process has been developed, is outlined and passed in policy. Again, just as a quick review, all cases will come to the board, so the board is always involved.
So, what is the net impact, then? Do we have?
We would have a savings.
Okay.
A savings. The fee that, that this gentleman versus that would be a savings.
That's all I was looking for. Thanks. Other questions? Seeing none, call or roll?
Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Elisen?
Aye.
Elisen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion carried.
Seeing none, call or roll?
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Seganek?
Aye.
Seganek, aye. Weenhop?
Aye.
Weenhop, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Motion carried.
All right. Now, resolution thirteen, be it resolved, the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve, Mr. Frank Edigem as an expulsion hearing officer for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year, as filed with the secretary to board of education.
So move. Second.
Even though I asked that this be pulled, I do support this. My only concern is that we only have one expulsion hearing officer being named, and if he is working for other school districts, or would be ill or out of town, I wouldn't want those expulsion hearings to be delayed. I think that was one of the things I wrestled with as a new board member, serving on those expulsion hearings, and the, and recognizing the difficulty of finding three board members who are available at the same time. And my hope would be, with having this hearing officer, or one or two hearing officers, that that process could be expedited for the sake of the students and their families.
Dr. Jones has comments. He's been working on attempting to do exactly what you're asking, and we just have been unsuccessful in getting those names yet.
And we hope to be, we are continuing to seek other people. We did have three people to start with, and after we had laid out the details, we had two individuals, this is one of them, and agreed to it, and then about a week later, the second individual declined for personal reasons and said that he had taken another opportunity and would not have time to do it. So, we are continuing to seek other, I will be bringing again, just as, as you see before you, when we do get other candidates, and we're very hopeful,